Welcome, welcome, welcome. We are the Duluth Public Schools ISD 709. This is our monthly committee of the whole meeting. We welcome those of you that are here and also the community that will watch this on our YouTube site. And so it is 4:40. It is October 3rd. And again, this is the monthly committee of the whole meeting where the board is present to hear presentations and information and all the exciting and interesting and things that are happening in our district. It's one of the highlights of our meetings in a month. And so we're excited to take role and get going.
Member Edith.
Present.
Member Gerbius.
Here.
Member LaFalkin.
Here.
Member Lofel.
Here.
Member Oswald is excused. And here, Mr. Sando.
Present.
Superintendent Mangas.
Present.
Assistant Superintendent Pons.
Present.
Deputy Chair Zunich.
Present.
And then I'll be...
Awesome. And so just a look at our agenda, board members. We have informational items under improving systems. And we'll be looking at staffing and budget meetings and booster club updates. We also have under informational items, presentations that are connected to our district initiative updates on improving, what is it? Supporting every school, every student, every day. And also about advancing equity tonight. So I turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Pons. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Chair, and good evening, Board. And I would like to welcome all of our administrators and guests to tonight's meeting. We're going to start off right away because we have a robust agenda.
Okay.
And we're going to start with Executive Director Simone Zunich. She's going to provide some insight related to staffing and budgeting meetings as well as an update to our booster club process.
Good evening. This is in regards to our progress monitoring. I wanted to update you. We really don't have a handout per se, starting in September and going all the way through October. The finance and HR team holds three staffing meetings, staffing and budget meetings over the school year. The first round of meetings takes place September, October. At the table is the Site Principal, Special Education, HR, Finance, Assistant Superintendent, Directors of TLE. We also include Achievement and Integration at Indian Ed if those programs are at the site. We review all staffing, FTEs, enrollment numbers, and budget codes. We also review the finance budget. It's an intensive process that we just implemented last year and was well received. The meeting should last around three hours. And that's it. We have found there's been some great communication. We found with budget codes, things tend to get rolled over and then they're not clean and we don't have good data. So we've been really bringing everyone to the table. And sometimes where people say, oh, that person isn't even in our building anymore. So that's a, it's a good time to change our budget code. So we're starting the process. We've done our high schools. We worked through our middle schools today and we'll be starting elementary schools next week.
We will take questions for that piece and then we'll move it to booster clubs. Any questions for Executive Director Zunich?
Can you quickly list again who's at the table of the meetings?
The Site Principal, Special Education, so the directors, also their Business Manager, HR, Finance, Assistant Superintendent, and Directors of TLE. Other questions?
Thank you for this information. Maybe you said it and I missed it, but so September, October is one of your meetings. And then what are the other timeframes of the other?
The first meeting we have is for the current year to make sure we've got everyone in their correct staffing budget code. And then we also review the budget, the non-labor budget codes. And then in January, we'll start, January, February, we'll do a mid-year review to see if there's anything that needs to be updated or corrected. And then come April, we start the next year process, so FY '25.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
See no additional questions. Simone, you have to go to the next.
Correct. So last month in our Committee of the Whole Meeting, I presented the booster club update. I went through with the athletic directors and we updated our booster club handout. As you'll remember, we had, I had a paragraph from MDE saying that basically we must, the school district must not manage booster clubs outside of the district. And then, of course, we're going to be using a Google Doc that all clubs will need to fill out. And so we have a spreadsheet at all times of who is operating. So at the time, the board was asking me about, it's under the blue box. It says suggested practices for finance, number eight. And it says, for the purpose of good communication with families, Duluth Public Schools may need to request tax statements, receipts, expenditures, and balances. So the board questioned that, if we need to have that sentence in there. So I did get, we communicated with our attorney and he said, we don't have to, but it's really up to the discretion of the board. MDE says we do not need to have it in there because it says we must not manage it. And of course, the state auditor also said we do not have to have oversight over booster clubs. But we can leave it in there. So I just want some direction to see how the board feels about it. But I do, like I said, I reached out to the state auditor, MDE, and our attorney.
I know that, I was one that spoke up to that. And I just think it leads us down a road that is dicey at best. And it leaves it open for somewhat scrutiny about why this booster club at this year as opposed to a booster club that didn't have any reporting or any asking of that for the following year. I certainly would, would at least listen to our activities directors or, you know, others that are working with booster club to see what their feelings are. But yet, I think the decision comes to us. I mean, I think, I think, I don't know what I think the board should do. I guess I'm not the board. So a couple of things, I'd love for board input right now so we would know whether or not we want to, I would imagine this booster club pamphlet will be on our consent agenda for the September board meeting. And we can either have conversation now and then have more conversations. Because we can't necessarily, we can't vote on this tonight. But we can certainly voice some, you know, your thoughts on number eight. For the purpose of good communication, the Duluth Public Schools may need to, I don't know what good communication actually, good communication with families. Duluth Public Schools may need to request tax statements, receipts, expenditures, and balances.
Do you have a question for the members to answer?
Just a comment, I guess. I mean, if MDE is saying must not manage, I agree that I wouldn't, I wouldn't have that, I wouldn't agree to put that in there. I would want to leave that as well.
Member LaFalkin?
I appreciate Simone, you doing the research with, from our legal perspective to MDE, et cetera. And I would be in agreement with Member Sadowski to take it out. I think, if I recall some of the discussion that we had, we were concerned about having it in, being confusing to families, right? And maybe...
I would go further and just say, I think, I mean, I'd love that we have the pamphlet that our school district can use to support our booster club and give them the information they need if they, you know. But it's up to the booster clubs to know their, know their policies and the procedures and what the state must expect of booster clubs. Does this, just having the guidelines, does that somewhat lead us down the perception that we do, we do somewhat guide them or we do somewhat oversee them? So even by having this brochure for the booster clubs to have some, some information, does that then still give us the perception to our community and to booster clubs and to others that we do manage booster clubs? So, you know, like I said, how do we allow this guideline to be something we would say is guideline, but yet we don't oversee booster clubs?
Thank you, Superintendent Mags.
I think the difference is that we are offering this to, booster clubs are still an important community partner. And so we're offering this as guidance on what is best practice. But it's, we're not the enforcers, we're not the accountability metric in this that's external. So by us offering guidance on what is best practice, just because it's a normal partnership, that would be similar to if we offered some guidance to the Boys and Girls Club and YMCA on after-school programming. You know, just as far as guidance as opposed to something that's holding somebody to it. So I think it's, that's where I think the line of taking out the, we may ask for stuff makes sense. Because it's, it's not, I think that line makes it sound like we may be the accountability police or we may not be. But this clearly delineates what our role is and what our role isn't. It provides some guidance because I think sometimes boosters, some boosters are doing it for the first time and don't know what the best practices are. So it strikes a fair line, I would say. But anything you would add?
I agree. Thank you for that. And we do have that legal compliance column in the middle. So there are rules and IRS regulations that need to be followed and I think they're very clear.
Member Sando?
Well, I was just curious if no rate could be even recorded to, to say Duluth Public Schools and the public may need to request tax statements. You know, if these booster clubs want to operate transparently, anybody should be asked for that information, the public, IRS, or others, the media, or Duluth Public Schools. And it's not that we're responsible for them, but it, so again, if you add something to that fact that, you know, it's not just us that might ask for it. Public in general should have the opportunity to request that information if they, if they feel that there's something that's concerning.
Sure. We can put, we can word it however we would like. No matter the board would like to.
But boy, I think again, the families that are contributing to booster clubs or, that they might have reason to ask those questions and follow up on it.
Member Derek Peter?
Member Sando, I appreciate everything that you're saying. But what I, what worries me is then it gets us into a little bit of a sticky wicket as to what responsibility we have. So I would just prefer if we pull that language out and then, but of course, I'm here to work together with everybody, but my preference would be to pull that language out so that it, so that there's very room for interpretation. Because I'm still trying to figure out what that, what good communication means.
Member Gerbius?
Thanks. I think that if MDE says we don't need this and the legal people said we don't need this, I don't see any reason for it. Somebody has to keep track of it and that's more time and effort. And if people want it, they should be able to get it from the booster clubs. So I would say take it out.
Member LaFalkin?
I'm just going to add to the echo here about taking it out. And I appreciate that you included the section on legal compliance. You know, I've done a lot of bylaws for organizations and that's the opportunity in their bylaws to state things like this.
So, yeah.
Okay.
So I think you can, you know, you can come before the board a September meeting with a modified brochure. And I think that you're hearing the general comment that we would think that it doesn't need to be in, we don't think, we don't think it should be in there. But let the legal compliance, and again, I'm looking underdevelop your bylaws and that would be the place for the booster club to also put those kinds of suggestions in place. And then we'll be able to take action or vote to go back to the drawing board.
Okay. Thank you. I will change that and move to the HR, Finance meeting and then Business Services, excuse me, and then to the School Board. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move to our second presentation. It will be given by Secondary Director Jill Larrab. She will be providing some information related to our middle school model and the committee's work at this point in time. And she has guests that she will introduce.
Yeah, thank you. Is somebody going to be presenting this or do I need to present it?
I'm doing it for you, Jen.
All right, thank you. Can you be more members? We're really excited to come here today with an unfinished product. I'm just letting you know that right off the top, that we're coming just with an update for you more than here's the plan. But we're really excited about the work that we're doing. And I do have quite a few people that are here in the audience and I would love if they would stand up. So we have had a very comprehensive middle school group that has been working. So please stand for me, please. So we have Danny, I see you. And there's Katie and Kurt. Let's see who else is here. Stuleen is here, Brian. And then I have Kristen and Dale and myself. That's only a fraction of our group, I believe. I think we probably have about 20 people. Oh, I see Jason way in the back. I couldn't see him around, so there's Jason. So today, we're here, wanting to talk to you about our journey with the middle school model. And so this really has been a journey. Just for everyone's awareness, this is like the third run at a new schedule. And so I'm going to talk about how this is different and how this feels different than the last couple of times when we have approached this. First of all, you're hearing me talk about the middle school model. This is way more about a model of what we want to develop to support kids than it is about just a schedule. And so, you know, that shift in language has been very important as we have gone through all of this. So we always started with our Minnesota Ten Commitments to Equity at the beginning of every single one of our meetings. We've always been centered around equity and trying to keep kids at our focus. And so these are the two of the Minnesota Commitments to Equity that we really felt matched our work that we're doing. And number nine is improving the conditions for learning. And number 10 is giving students options. I'm hoping that you had some chance to look at some of this at home prior. So I'm just going to touch on things because I know you have a really heavy agenda tonight. So the next slide that you'll see is our committee membership. So Ethan Fisher and I have been working together in this process. Ethan has provided us with the space. He also got committee members for us to work together. And he's been a part of this the whole time. So this has really been in good faith and partnership with the DFT as we've gone along. So you'll see the list of teachers we've got on here. You'll see the list of district staff members, administrators, school counselors. We have quite a few different places that we're touching upon trying to have representation. Really wanting to ensure that we had different types of teachers as well. Some of those that were impacted the last school round, such as word language, had been missed on the committee and we hadn't had word language. We want to make sure that we were, we were trying really hard to be inclusive when we were setting our committee up. We can go to the next slide. Thank you. So we were given some parameters at the start of this work. We were tasked to creatively envision a middle school model. Now, that's different than a schedule. When Mr. Mangas, Superintendent Mangas, excuse me, had asked Commissioner Mueller at the time about the art standards and getting that, that okay for a pause for trying to get our host in order a little bit better for implementation, it really was centering around a model, like what do we want the experience of our middle school students to be? And so it wasn't just about the schedule at that point. It became more about the experience. And at the same time, the district is really engaged in that work around our strategic plan. So we held true to some of those desired daily experiences. And you'll see that that's part of our parameters as well, focusing our students at the center of the work that we're doing. We were asked to do our best to not reduce core content minutes, that we would be cost responsible. And that's in personnel and busing, PD, everything, that we align to our desired daily experiences and that we would come into compliance with those standard outcomes that we need to come into compliance with. And the next slide really is just giving you that reminder of our standards compliance. I know that I've shared this with the board before, but some members of our public may not yet know this. In 2018, Minnesota adopted new art standards. They were separated into these fine arts areas, visual, media, theater, dance, and then music. And so they are, they have added a couple of different art areas from before. And we also had a big shift in how our standards were put out to our students. In the past, it had been by grade level bands. So like you would have like sixth through eighth grade band, ninth through 12th grade band. Now they're by individual grade levels at that level. And so we now have sixth grade specific art standards and seventh grade specific and eighth grade specific, which is very different than what it had been previously. So on the next slide, you do see just a little statement about what the impacts are on our middle school. So in our middle school, our students must be offered and have access to at least three different art areas and are required to meet the benchmarks in at least two of those art areas every year. So it was okay in sixth grade. In sixth grade, we already had art as being part of what they had received in sixth grade. So they had visual arts and music. And seventh graders had music, but they didn't have another art. And eighth graders could choose if they wanted to have an elective art or they wanted to have music. There was more of a choice. There was not any sort of requirement when you went into eighth grade. So no matter what we do, we have to inject more art into whatever we do as our middle school programming. And it's required. It's not elective anymore. There are requirements that we're going to be doing. So we have to do something different next year. We, we do not have the space in our current schedule in order to meet the art standards. So we've taken that approach and we've been looking at what do we do different? And it was really interesting because I saw something that said that, yeah, you can build whatever kind of schedule you want. It's a balancing act because everything is just kind of finite. So whatever you're putting in means something else has to be taken out. And so if we're trying to put in more elective options for kids, then, you know, some of our core content minutes might have to go down. I mean, there's, there's a balancing act to putting something together like this. So the next slide shows the timeline of our work. And I'm going to stop talking here pretty soon and let other people do a little bit of talking for you. But I just wanted to share with you that we really started this work in March. And I took a completely different approach to this. We didn't even talk about the schedule for the first few months. And I think it might have thrown everybody just a little bit. But I think everybody coming into the committee is like, let's talk about the schedule. Like, oh, no, let's talk about the model. What do we want for our students? It really has been a different approach. But we did eventually get to talking about schedules and we have really been, maybe eight, maybe eight versions. It's kind of the number that keeps coming to my mind. And we haven't even settled on one firm one yet. So just letting you know that, but I wanted you to know where we're at. But we are now at that point where we're talking about a schedule, but we're trying to keep the costs down a bit. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. And you can kind of see where we've been throughout all of that. And then on the next slide, we really are trying to show that what we're trying to do centers, really, we're trying to keep this at our center every time that we come together. What do kids and what do staff want to see out of our experiences in the public schools? And so, you know, we want kids to feel like they belong. We want them to have those connections. We want to have choices and options. So we want to be able to see if we can make that happen for them. They want to have that support with their mental health. And we want them to make sure that they feel like they know what's expected of them and that they're being treated fairly. And then staff have similar kinds of expectations or desires. And, you know, they want to work collaboratively. They want to work together and grow professionally as teachers. They want to have those systems and resources that support the students, especially in their mental health and their socio-economic, or social emotional growth. They want to make sure that their schools are safe. And then also class size has been a piece of that too. Like how do we differentiate for our students? How do we support and meet their needs with some of the class sizes? And building relationships to staff is really important as well. So we took all of this together and we created a belief statement as a committee. And so I just wanted to share with you what we, as a committee, believe. So we believe that the middle school students build community and positive relationships through exploration, choice, and student-centered learning. We came to that after doing a ton of research for probably about two months. We had discovered the Association for Middle Level Education. And we dug deep into a lot of topics there and doing a lot of reading. Everyone was engaged in their own, like what they wanted to see and read. We're going to accomplish this through team, educator teams. It becomes a real big focus. Everything we talk about really centers on this idea of teaming. And these teams are committed to supporting our students' academics, emotional, and social development and providing that environment that's welcoming, inclusive, and affirming to all. That in a nutshell is what we want to see for our middle school students. That's really what we want to have delivered to our students. I'm going to turn it over to Brian for just a minute because he's going to talk about our initial conference that we went to.
Good evening, everybody.
Number two, there you go.
There we go. So six of us went to the National Middle School Conference. And it was, it was an opportunity for us to really dive into what the middle school model could be and not have the distractions of being in the building or being, you know, a few miles away from our buildings even at that time of the year. It was like, it was in June, so it was after the school year. We, the, the experience kind of was structured off of the deep dive of the book that we've been using to guide us. But it was really a, a really, like a dive into what the middle school model should be and what opportunity should be available for kids and for staff in the, in the environment of the middle school. I think as you go through, as we were going through this, we started working on our, one of our iterations of the schedule. But really, it's like one of the things that I would point out and I continue to point out to my staff is that the middle school years are the years that have the greatest development in the human body and just being a human other than infancy. So if you take that approach to what we can provide students, that's really what our goal is. And we were able to start really diving into what we were doing at that point.
Thank you. All right. And the next slide, we're going to kind of talk a little bit about the work groups and deliverables. And Kristen's going to talk about culture and climate. And Bill Gail's going to talk a little bit about his group, which is group of instruction assessment. So like Brian said, as we dug into the four corner zones that you saw on the last slide, exploratory, teaming, intervention, enrichment, and, what am I forgetting? This is what happens when you're in front of people. What's that last one? Did I say teaming?
Advisement.
Advisement, thank you. That all of those things really play a huge role in creating the climate and culture that we are trying to make for our students. So right now, we're all in the middle of a PPIS initiative. Some schools have already started a long time ago and are doing that. And with that push as well as with these four cornerstones, our goal is to create an environment for students where they belong. So that's in the desired daily experience that students are afforded. And all of those things, particularly teaming, would reinforce the adult advocacy for students in our buildings. So making sure that we know every student has an adult in the building that they can turn to, ideally more than one, so that they have someone who's there to support them both academically and socially. So when it comes to deliverables, we did put together a small thing that goes over the cornerstones and defines them as they sort of are juxtaposed against the junior high model. So that teaming piece, making sure that kids have someone in the building they can turn to.
So that teaming piece, making sure that kids have someone in the building they can turn to, having options for courses so they can feel out what might be a pathway for them in the future, and then also allowing time for their teachers to work with them on intervention and or enrichment. So we have not moved on to the family engagement and communication just yet, beyond the point of listing the cornerstones only because we are not there with our schedule. And so as you hear more today, I just want to say that I think that the four cornerstones that we have laid out are absolutely essential to the success of our middle school students and are worth the time and the potential financial commitment that they might take to do what we need to do for them.
Jen, can I ask your team, thank you for, just for our community that's listening and for some of our visitors in the back, what is teaming? What is teaming? You've used it a number of times throughout the course, and just what is teaming?
When you look at the middle school. Okay, so when I talk about teaming, I'm talking about interdisciplinary teams. So ideally, right now, we have that somewhat in sixth grade, but not in seventh and eighth. So it would mean that students were assigned to a group of teachers. And so that small group of students would always have the same teachers. So they would, it would allow for time for those teachers to meet as a team and discuss student concerns. So people who might need intervention, those students who are really excelling and may need an enrichment opportunity. But it allows for more students to be seen, whereas right now in the model we're currently in, each individual teacher is responsible for that. They could meet together as a team to talk about a common group of students.
Can I speak to this too? I just want to add, we have had teaming in our middle schools in the past. So the concept is anything new, ISB 709. And just like we were explaining, it was interdisciplinary. And yes, our sixth grade teachers have kept that. We lost it probably in seventh and eighth grade over the last 10 years. But anyway, so what are we looking at doing differently with teaming this time around? Or is it more of the challenge of, you know, finding the schedule that works so we can add that back into our four, seventh and eighth grades staff?
Yes, we do have a schedule that we were really looking into and trying to do a cost analysis. I'm going to get to that a little bit later and can talk a little bit more about that. But within that schedule, there was time every day where teachers were allowed some teaming time. So there would be, there are 15 minutes of prep time, but there's an additional 20 minutes per day that teachers were going to be able to use creatively to do some teaming as well. So adding that to their schedule was the important part of that.
Yeah, again, when I was teaching middle school, we did that beginning of the day, probably the four days. We kind of lost our teaming when we added PLCs, I think. There was a big change in the schedule.
This allows for both.
Pardon?
This would allow for both. What we're trying to do it allows for the content-specific groups, which are professional learning communities, and that interdisciplinary teaming.
And again, it's very important that it be for our students. It was something that when we lost it, our seventh and eighth grade staff thought that we did lose something very important for our middle school kids in terms of meeting their needs and making those connections, which is a whole important problem today.
True.
Is it similar to BARG that's being done at Deadbough in the night again? Okay.
So we did manage.
Sure. Having been a middle school principal for 10 years, I really think that teaming is one of the most important aspects that we're bringing forward when we think about how we're going to better engage students, when we're thinking about what we need as far as sense of belonging. All of these things are really important. Quite often, districts move away from true middle school model partly because of the financial costs. But this is something that we're really investing in as a strategy to lift the needs of all learners, to close opportunity gaps. And if we think about the work that's been done thus far, we, last month, you heard about the revised elementary schedule, and that's in place. Now we're working on the middle school schedule, and that's nearing completion. And then really, the capstone piece to all that work is also going to be looking at our high school schedule. And I know the public sometimes wants to say, well, are you doing a seven-period day? That's what we originally talked about with middle school too. But we found that when we had a dedicated group of leaders and teachers and stakeholders all working together collaboratively, that we came up with something better than any of us would have imagined independently. So I'd say this, along with our whole school district being universal PBIS, those are two very, very big systemic things that we've put in place that I think are going to have significant payoff for our learners.
Very welcome, Jen.
Yeah, I just want to really commend the group for the work you've done so far. I remember sitting in that quality steering committee meeting as the school board liaison when we were thinking about it. And so you've done some incredible work already. And I was going to add some similar kind of comments that members down home had because I hate to age myself, but I remember being, when we did move to that true middle school model at one time, I was a parent, I didn't even have kids in middle school yet, but they asked me to be on the committees. And we moved towards it and my kids benefited, and it was wonderful. And so I'm very excited of the work that you're moving towards again and really appreciate, I know, all the time and the deep dive that you've been doing on this. And that's what we need to do, really make a commitment to it as well, is to have this committee be working the way you are. So thank you for that.
And I know there's a number of slides left, so we want to make sure while teaming's a chance to go through a quick follow-on, this slide, exploratory, I think that's something else that maybe you need to explain. Because that's something I've seen done with like an exploratory day, what they do with once a semester or once a month or whatever. How are we looking at doing exploratory? Maybe explain exploratory to our staff.
That's next, would be also.
I think that's where I should. I've had the privilege of working with a group of teachers focuses on curriculum instruction and assessment for the model. And we were tasked with two deliverables. The first one was looking at course offerings that we might be able to add to what we already have existing, those being exploratory and elective offerings. Exploratory courses probably more so for the beginning of a middle schooler's experience, so sixth, seventh grade. Those courses would be more of a chance for students to be able to explore multiple topics. So for example, if it was an exploratory course, and this is just an idea, world languages. It would be a chance for maybe a sixth grader to explore German, Etat de la Monde, and Spanish all within one course, so that they would have a chance to be able to experience all of those and maybe make a more informed decision when it came time later to pick an elective, because they've had a chance to experience work with that language. Elective offerings, of course, would be a deeper dive in, probably more towards eighth grade. Where students would be able to, now that they've had a chance to explore a little bit, maybe an informed decision into a deeper dive elective offering. The other deliverable that we were tasked with was just to really oversee, which I had talked about, making sure that whenever a schedule got put into place, we were able to implement those art standards effectively so that we could be in compliance with those state standards.
Did that answer your question, understanding?
Well, just kind of. Again, exploratory can really be big, you know, when you start looking at, I mean, everybody in the room can start rattling off something like filmmaking or clothing design or, you know, fitness training. I mean, just think of careers and come up with a class for any career you can think of.
Yeah, so we can take a look at what other Minnesota districts do for exploratory courses in the states. We're also going to be getting some stakeholder feedback from students and from teachers. We've created a short list of ideas and we'll be using that. Jen likes to use the analogy of on-ramps. So we really thought about what were some of the courses that we have in eighth grade, ninth grade, some of our CTE courses, our languages courses. And this would be that opportunity for kind of that on-ramp into those courses. So thinking of, you know, like an intro to STEM platform, maybe students would be able to get a chance to work with some of the STEM-related courses that are in our CTE programming.
Thanks.
All right. The last group really was the group that went to the conference and has been working on some of the structures. And the biggest one, of course, being the schedule, has taken up a significant amount of our subgroup committee time trying to develop a schedule. So we're going to move into where we're at right now. So we've done a lot of exploring, and so if you want to go to the next slide. We talked about the seven-period day. We talked about what we had, you know, different opportunities and options. We talked about skinnies, we talked about block scheduling, we talked about all kinds of different things. We've kind of landed on a four-by-four A/B option at this point in time is really where we are at. That does not mean that this is where we are staying. I just want to make sure that I'm clear on that because right now, I'm sharing out information and trying to get feedback and input from others as well. Like what excites you about what we've been talking about with the model? What challenges do we have so that our committee is then can take a look at that and be able to massage again? And we're trying to do what's best for our students and what's best for our teaching staff in the middle school level. And so, you know, we don't have it there yet, but I keep saying this, that I feel like we're on just like the verge of greatness here somewhere, but we just haven't gotten quite over that yet. But it's an exciting time because we keep working it and refining it, and we've been working and refining, and we keep getting closer. Block scheduling, if you go to the next slide, this is just kind of showing you that there's four different blocks. We have an advisory, we have an intervention timeframe. But block scheduling, the way that we're envisioning a four-by-four A/B would be like, you would have a certain set of periods that you would be doing on day one, and you'd have different classes for the most part on day two. So you might have PE on day one and you might have music on day two, you know, so that, you know, your A and your B have a rotating schedule. We've had lots of conversations about how to put things together. You know, like do we put A/B for everything? Do we do like a quarter for arts so that, you know, like they're getting it every day for the A/B for the whole quarter? There's a lot of different things that we do not have decisions about yet, you know. So just letting you know that, that you're going to probably hear a few things maybe coming your way. And things, we're just still working on them, okay? I know what's concerning when you have a 70-minute block of time, like women do those kids for a whole 70 minutes, and I don't have them the next day and I have them the following day. So, you know, we've already recognized that if we're moving into more of a block schedule, we need to really invest in PD and so we can have that conversation. And I discovered that A and L E does some customized professional development for our district. And it really isn't too expensive to get somebody to come in and assist us with some of this work. So I'm really excited about that. So we are talking more about that block schedule, and I just wanted you all to kind of be aware of that. It's not finalized yet, but we are really looking into 70-minute blocks right now. So the next slide, we're just going to get into a little bit about, you've seen something similar in the past for me, like what we have that we're going to be offering kids. And so you can see up through, you know, up through number five, and all of them are all the same. Social studies, and Phi Ed, you know, trying to make sure that we have movement. That's something that's really important with young adolescents. And so, you know, having that PE time, we have health again and wellness into eighth grade. But then you'll see like, it's kind of changed a little bit. We have music that we're going to be requiring in sixth grade and a visual arts in sixth grade. We will have an exploratory option that would potentially be maybe media arts. You know, at this point in time, it's other exploratory classes that we can have in sixth and seventh grade. But you'll see in seventh grade, like they're required to do two options. So it's not like they have choice in their options, but they are required to have two fine arts requirement. That could be music, that could be visual arts. It could be visual arts and media arts. I mean, kids at that point will have some choice in what they're doing there. We've talked about exploratory classes being sixth and seventh grade only and like the same ones that could be in sixth and seventh grade. Just because we don't have too many options that we can't manage as we're starting to implement things. And then we really take a look at that after implementation. And again, that curriculum group is going to be doing much of that work. I did want to share on the next slide, you know, we've been looking at some different time comparisons and just wanting to make you all aware that as we're moving into a schedule, and this could change depending upon the model, but I wanted you to be aware that, you know, like, so block scheduling, because we're trying to make so many more options for kids, we are going to have some reduction in some of those core minutes. It's just, as I said, you can only put so much in and some of the things have, you know, it's a balancing act. And so six 49-minute periods per day versus maybe having the four 70s does reduce some time that they have in different classes. However, some of the things that we are really excited about is having true advisory for kids. Like having that period of time where they're always with the same teacher who's checking in on their progress, who's doing that sense of community building, who is teaching them their second step lessons, who, you know, like, they're that main contact person that every single day they have that set amount of time with those students and they're able to offer that. We don't really have a formal advisory period right now. When sometimes acts like advisory, sometimes as intervention, you know, this is actually pulling those two things apart and really fitting a need for our student body. And when, you know, pulling those two things apart, really having a time to focus on those interventions and enrichment too. We're really trying to make sure we can build in some time for that as well. Yeah, so I just wanted to kind of share that, you know, time, our time is finite. We stay within the same amount of time, but how we're piecing together and where we're trying to make some opportunities for kids, I think is really important for you to know. The next slide just really kind of talks a little bit about impact, and I don't want to take forever on this, but just kind of sharing with you that, you know, like what happens is that we do get that sense of community building with advisory time. We have not touched PLCs, so just making sure that everybody's aware that PLC time would be the same for that content-specific need. And interdisciplinary teaming is really what we're trying to do and be able to plan for interventions and enrichments, and then those electives. Those all meet that cornerstone. Those are the cornerstone, those are the experiences, those divided experiences we want to see for kids. There are some block scheduling benefits, there are some disadvantages. People are going to tell them to us and we're going to try to continue to work through them. It's really what we're going to be doing, so just letting you know that. As far as the cost analysis goes, yeah, this is not cheap to try to offer more opportunities for kids. And so whenever you're trying to offer more classes to students, you know, we do know that there's already an inherent cost to the art standards. We're going to have to hire more people to teach in that standards area. But whenever we're delivering more and additional programming for students, there are costs and resources in our inner people. And so we do know that there are costs associated with this. We feel though that the block scheduling is not implemented to be a cost savings. That's not the purpose of actually doing that, but it's really that positive school climate and to be able to increase those offering. And in order to realize that, we know that we also have to have an investment in professional development. So that's going to be a key part of that. We are going back in to that kind of drawing table. I think we're still working on the same model, but we really do need to go back and do some refinement because we did cost ourselves out from our parameters. And so we know that this is going to have a cost, and we wanted to share with you where we were at because we are trying to begin having conversations with stakeholders. We're starting to have conversations with our middle school teachers. I met with our DEs this morning, I'm meeting with Lincoln later on in the week, trying to gather those questions and feedback from stakeholders. I've put together a FAQ with answers that I know from what I know from now. You know, so we're trying, I'm trying to get ahead and trying to inform people as best as I can as we continue to move things on. We're trying to get that student input into course offerings, give feedback from teachers into that. And all of those things are kind of happening right now. And when we get a little more solid, then we'll start going to the family and community, sharing opportunities. But, you know, today's kind of the first step with the public at this venue, and I wanted to share where we were at. So that's what we have for you today. I'm sorry it took so long.
No problem. Thank you, Director Laura. And I would be remiss not to say thank you for all your efforts in pulling this together. You and the committee have been working really hard to come up with a new model and to really think thoughtfully around all those opportunities. We talked a lot about the student-desire daily experiences, and hopefully you will see that we really are trying to consider those desires from our students and our families and make sure that we build a schedule, a model that really meets those needs. So I want to thank her and the team for all their working efforts, so thank you.
Yes, and I just want to say thank you as well, Jakeem, for your hard work. I know there's still work before us. I think this is really important for the district. And interestingly, the work around the middle-level model through the labor management process was really... was really part of the genesis for the referendum work that we did or that we're doing now. Because we were moving forward with a middle level model that nobody was completely happy about. And during the labor management process, people said, hey, let, what if we ask for a pause from the state? And we go back to the drawing board and we try and do this right rather than quick. And so taking the time to, to invest and get, a lot of times we say that the people closest to the work really know what needs to be done. To take that time and get it right, uh, has been really important. And we also know that sometimes delivering what is right and best for our kids does require a resource. And so that's part of the reason why, one of the main reasons why we're moving forward with our referendum is because this was an ask of the labor management process in the best interest of kids, in the best interest of staff. And we're trying to make sure that we do it right. So I want to say, uh, thank you to everyone for your hard work.
Thank you. Our next presentation will be given by Dr. Tanya Lake. Tanya, as you come up, you're going to grab all those mics, that'd be great. She will be providing an update related to our continuous improvement team process. And I think she has a number of individuals here, but yes, again, our principals and other leaders are here. So welcome principals. I'll turn it over right away to Dr. Lake.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm just here today to give you an update on one of our district's main initiatives, our continuous improvement teams. I was here in the spring, um, so I did share quite a bit at that time, so this one will be a, a bit more brief. Shannon, are you going to, okay.
I got it.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay, um, just wanted to highlight the Minnesota commitments to equity. Our work in continuous improvement, like much of our district work really is grounded in equity. And I just wanted to highlight that, um, those 10 commitments, you can read through them. You can see that the work that we're doing today falls under quite a few of them. Uh, so tonight I'm just going to give you an overview of the initiative, a brief history and a status update. Give you an opportunity to meet the principals and then to ask some questions. So C I Ts, our continuous improvement process is one of the things that I mentioned that was identified as a key priority in our district, our key strategy to help improve student achievement. It's one of our district's, um, key priorities that we have an action card on that we're really tracking closely. It uses a continuous improvement process that was developed by Minnesota Department of Education. And I've worked closely with our partner, um, at the Regional Centers of Excellence to adapt it to fit district's why. Because a lot of the processes that were developed, they were really developed to be at the school level. But we're trying to do this at the district level and trying to do across all of our schools in a very standardized manner. The what, the why and the who. So the continuous improvement process is really, um, the what. It's something that encourages us to seek connections and coherence and alignment between all of the work that we're doing from the district level all the way down to the classroom. It really focuses on shifting a mindset to growth, growth and learning. So that's a key component of the work that we're doing and it's really more about the process or how we do the work. The team is the who that does the work. Each of our schools have a continuous improvement team or a leadership team that represents a broader perspectives across our schools. We worked really hard last year to ensure that we had more representation on our, on our continuous improvement teams. The process or the how, you're probably all familiar with Plan New Study Act. That really is the how of the work that we're doing together. The planning was really the big focus of last year. Our teams all conducted a comprehensive needs assessment where they reviewed data. They identified root cause for their data. From that, they identified strategies that they felt would address that root cause. And then, um, and then the next step would be to, to implement those strategies. The school improvement plan is really the tool that we use or the written plan that schools have that they use to achieve the vision of their school. It's really that roadmap of how everybody get to where they want to go. And the primary purpose is to implement a research-based strategy, practice or program that will address that root cause. And, you know, a key component of that is to identify strategies that they believe that the system can implement with the greatest likelihood of success. So where we've been, um, a reminder, C I Ts are not new. This is something that our district embarked upon back in 2016. Our teams did get training and support back, back then through December of 2018. Some of you were here in January of 2018 when we had some very deep mid-year cuts. And the funding for the initiative was, was cut at that time as well. So from 2018 to 2021, schools continued as best they could with the C I T work, but there really wasn't district guidance or support. There wasn't training, um, there wasn't an intentional, um, focus on it. So we did have some inconsistencies in practices across our district. But in 21, 22, the district recommitted to C I Ts and we spent the year preparing to relaunch the initiative. So we did a lot of work behind the scenes, um, again, working with our partners, the Regional Centers of Excellence, looking at the guidelines from Minnesota Department of Ed and aligning our work to those expectations and guidelines. We developed some tools and resources that would help support the initiative that our teams would have, that would help us with that consistency across the district. We did some, um, pre and post-testing or assessing, um, the status of our leadership teams. And then we identified teams' needs based on the results of that leadership rubric. And we proposed a roadmap for implementation. In 22, 23, the district relaunched C I Ts across the district. We provided training and support on those updated processes. We monitored the use of those processes, gathered feedback on them and then made some improvements based on that feedback. So fast forward to now, um, by the end of the 22, 23 school year or year one, each school formed a team to guide the work of their C I T. Um, they developed a schedule for their teams to meet regularly. They completed their comprehensive needs assessments and identified the root cause. They set student outcome goals based on their data. They identified strategies or a strategy to address that root cause that they identified. And then they developed an action plan for implementing them. And where we are now in this fall, our schools are in, um, are in different places and implementing, monitoring and evaluating those strategies. So all of them have them identified, each of them are in various stages of implementation. But where we're headed now is we're going to continue to support teams through this initial implementation of the initiative and really move towards full implementation or this becoming standard practice. You know, at some point it, it will be just the way that we do business. There won't be something that will need as much, um, training and support. But this year we will continue to provide that training and support on the updated processes, then a monitor of those processes, gather some additional feedback and then incorporate some new resources from M D E into our practices. Since we developed, um, our practices or our processes, M D E did make some, um, adjustments to some of the resources. So we will be doing some of that adjusting as well. And then again, we'll, through that continuous improvement lens, we'll be making improvements on our own processes and the feedback that we get from those who are using them. So before we meet the principals, do you have any questions just on the initiative itself or what we're doing?
May I just ask you?
Just had a quick question. On slide 11, there's a handbook link.
Yeah.
Um, and it's just not working. Can you share with me some of the tools and resources that are in this handbook? Was that to create consistencies for those, maybe M D E, you know?
Yeah. So each step of the way, I see the link isn't working. I'll have to fix that. Each step of the way within the process, whether it's, um, doing that comprehensive needs assessment or writing their school improvement plan, there are resources. So resources in how to review data, processes, teams can use, um, tools for identifying root cause. Is another example, we also, also have a resource of, um, uh, practices that M D E would, has already vetted as being considered evidence-based practices supported in research. So we have a list of what those are. Also, uh, just like our rubrics that we use to identify where teams are in terms of leadership. But I'll put that link so you'll have access to all of that. No problem. Thank you.
Director Laura, Kim and Andrew Sandow.
Okay. Two quick questions, just, um, on the slide of the overview, just what is the makeup of the C I T teams generally in each school?
Generally is chaired by our school principals. And in most, at the elementary, most schools have representation from each of the grade levels. Um, also from specialists, also from, um, from other support staff within their buildings. At the high school, it's a similar, um, similar setup. We have support staff throughout the building chaired by a principal, but, um, department, department heads are typically the ones that are represented there. Some of our schools do have, um, family and or community partners on their teams as well. That used to be something that was a requirement. Now things have shifted a little bit, it's encouraged, but what's, what is required is that there's a strong link to, um, to community and parents. So that they are aware of what's happening and they do have a role to provide input.
And then I just had a second question. It was with your last slide where you talked about incorporating new resources from M D E into our practices. And can you just give some examples about what those new resources are?
Um, they just updated their tools of how to identify root cause, for example, or the forms that they, um, that they recommend for teams to do with their school improvement plans on, um, things like that.
Thank you.
Yeah. And so we're not having teams backtrack and redo things or anything like that. They're not really substantial changes. We're just, as we get to those stages in the process, we'll be, um, funneling in those resources at that time.
Andrew Sandow.
Thank you. For the board, um, staff and the public, can you maybe explain the difference between the C I T teams and the Q L T teams? And then give them where and when they intersect?
Yeah, that's a good question. So each of our schools have continuous improvement teams, as, as I stated. Um, our quality leadership teams or Q L Ts are district level teams that are really partnerships between labor and management. And they follow up to the Quality Steering Committee, which is kind of the, um, the higher level team of representation from each of the Q L Ts. I guess it's kind of more of a district level committee. I don't know. I can't think right now. Can you?
I guess I would add that the intersection comes in that there are representatives from the buildings that are on the Q L Ts and Q S C teams. If there are dynamics in the building or questions, um, related to practices, um, or initiatives and efforts, those, uh, questions go up and down the system. So staff have an opportunity to bring up issues and, uh, to, or through the management process. Those conversations happen at the sites, the sites then have opportunities to at least be aware of concerns that may be, um, existing in, in the building and addressed again. So there are some intersections because there are representatives that they serve on home, but if nothing else, they serve as communication tools, um, again, for labor as well as ability leadership teams. Thank you.
Okay. So in just wrapping things up with that piece of it, where our schools are like as of today is they've all reviewed their comprehensive needs assessments that they've done, um, that they did last fall. So incorporated new data, updated, um, the data on that comprehensive needs assessment where, um, where it was needed. They also reviewed the root causes that they identified to ensure that now this new data either confirms it or if it shows something questionable that they have an opportunity to go back and reexamine that root cause. They also then take a look at the strategies that they selected to still see that those strategies are appropriate based on the new data that came in. And then they're, um, they've updated their goals and their, um, action plans for the upcoming school year. So that brings us up to, to today, um, and where we are. So next, I'd like you to have an opportunity to meet our principals. They're each trying to take maybe up to two minutes, maybe a minute, um, just to go through, just an opportunity to introduce themselves, um, to talk about anything that they're particularly proud of, that they've accomplished with their continuous improvement work and anything else they might want the community during to know, um, about their C I T or their schools.
Pass one down.
Oh, great. Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. School improvement is really, really hard. And there's so many things that are not on our plans that we do each and every day. And so to put it into two minutes, it's going to be really difficult. Pay the bill for it as well at the Area Learning Center, American Excellence Online. And so this is a, a really good process that is in place with the district, with the C I Ts to get everybody's input on what we think is really really important. And so like I said, I'll go back to, you know, not everything that we do is going to be on this plan, but it does drive so much of what we do. And so, um, there's, there's a lot to do. And, you know, just to give you some percentages of, you know, some improvements that we've had. You know, we have kind of a, a different situation at the Area Learning Center. And, you know, students come to us that are credit deficient. And we actually had a 14% increase on four-year on-time graduation rates, which is really exciting. And we also had a 25% increase in M C A proficiency program on the A and L side of the house. So we, we were short our goal, we were shooting for, um, you know, 15%. We were short, um, you know, not needing that 15% improvement and the same, we were shooting for 30%. We got 25%. So all those efforts, we fell short, but we're still moving forward. Um, a couple of things that I'd like for you to know about the A L C is that this past year, and this doesn't include summer, we had 2,700 total courses opened up for credit recovery and independent study. And so we, we really just want to shine a light on, we have a lot of struggling students in our schools. And we get to see a lot of them because they need to make up those credit. And out of the 2,700 classes that were open, 1,493 credits less were submitted. So there's a 55% increase in, or, um, of courses started and then completed. And so there's a lot of work to do. But to have that many classes is just a testament to the counselors getting up early, principals working with, um, you know, their staff in the buildings to get kids signed up for credit recovery. So we can have on-time graduation. So anyway, thank you.
Hello, um, my name is Ash Jamone and I'm a principal at Piedmont Elementary. Just returning after being away for two years, so please bear with me. I had the good fortune of spending a couple hours this afternoon with our C I T team. And we have been really dissecting some of our data, looking at not only our reading and math scores, but also looking at the sufferers that within Piedmont that is really, have really been impacted in our student achievement. So some of the areas that we're really looking at, focusing on over the course of the next school include our students who receive special education services, our free reuse count in addition to our students of cover. So in the data that we looked at for Piedmont, um, we really are starting to see the significance of disproportionality among our marginalized populations. So though the, the school of the progress involved reading and math, we did not reach our goals. But we're on our pre-COVID track, so that really was a celebration for us when we looked at the data today. The second area that we have to revisit at Piedmont is in regard to our outer school and in-school suspensions. Two years ago, the numbers were quite staggering for Piedmont. Another celebration I'd like to share is that those numbers were cut and left in half over the last school year. So getting back on track regarding positive major intervention and supports in addition to really looking at our M T S, M T S S model within our building and addressing it from a perspective of universal core. and addressing it from a perspective of universal core. So, how we're working with our students in our classrooms, how to work with our students in our hallways in addition to partnering between home and school. So, though there is a long way to go after pre-COVID levels, we are making progress in anywhere in the right direction.
Good evening, Shamerson, Principal at Lauren Carter Elementary. And it's always, for me, it's good to know where we're going, but it's always also good to reflect where we've come from. And so, I just want to backtrack just a little bit. This last year, looking at a standards audit, going through all of our standards and benchmarks, not only at grade level but previous, so that we understand what it is that we want our students to be learning. That was done K5. We did a literacy walkthrough to find out what are the impacts of our learning and what type of learning are they doing and how is that impacting our students? Maximizing our core instruction and reducing lost learning time due to a pull-on model that we have been implementing. And so, that's something that we've done over the last year. And then developing our practice profile, implementing ICANN statements, learning targets, et cetera, into our practice along with a formative assessment that our teachers are practicing on a daily basis. And then as we go into this year, making sure that we have our fidelity check and making sure that we can do a walkthrough to our classrooms and making sure that that is what we say that we're doing and implementing that for this year. So, those three goals that we have in our cycle line coming into this year, the three areas we are identifying at school in those areas of identification regarding our students receiving special education, students of color, our free and reduced lunch population, as well as our consistent attendance. The consistent attendance, we made great gains in last year, which is really great. It still is an area of focus for us as we know that if we have students in our buildings, we can make a difference in their lives. Our reading is a continued area of focus and to address our MCA scores and increasing math as well as our PBIS scores to improve our climate and culture. With those challenges in front of us, we continue to be faced with our K1 students, which are, they come to us with a high level of social-emotional behavior needs. And so, with all of that, I would say that is our number one challenge right now. So, that's our focus.
Hi, I'm Eve Hester, and I'm a principal at Whole. And we are over 700 students this year for K5. So, I am just proud every day that our staff is handling the wide range of needs, languages, and just sheer size. Our CNA in our, we make gains across the board and particularly some big gains in our fourth and fifth grades and initial versions that grow to like, say, 25, 30% in some of our reading and math areas there, or sorry, reading and science. Some of our behavior, one of our goals is our behavior documentation of ODRs. Personally, I was up in kindergarten in first grade last year, but I also attribute that to our MTSS coordinator and our behavior team and just really pushing for documentation so that we can identify the worst students that need those tier-two supports that we can now provide because of our great behavior team. Our CIT team met yesterday and we just really finalized the SIP for this year, and they are feeling very ambitious and I'm also proud of them for that. We started our explicit instruction practice profile last year and then last year doing a self-assessment to figure out where our staff feel fitting the most training. And one of those areas is rooted in Minnesota standards. And that fits really nicely with some of the district work and teacher clarity, so I look forward to moving forward with that. We also are reviewing our check-in, check-out practice profile that we finalized and had shared learning on last year. And actually, I didn't have a staff meeting planned, but my staff asked for one so that we could review check-in, check-out tomorrow, so they are coming to do that. And then I kind of thought we might put a pause on our math goal, which was doing vocabulary explicit instruction, but there are some very, very motivated people to work on math vocabulary. And so, we are hoping to have that done and train, doing some professional learning on that and ready to go by March. So, again, we're just going to continue pushing forward and I'm just really proud of the ambitious educators we have. And let me just add a little opening.
Hi, everyone. I'm Anna Cockett, I'm the principal over at Lester Park. Lester was a little unique in that our current SIP goals are really focusing around school environment and PBIS, that's the Behavior, Intention, and Supports, and then SDL in our building. When our CIT first had this conversation, they identified our root causes, our school environment doesn't always meet all the needs of the whole child. So, they really wanted to focus in there, knowing that all of those things lead to better performance academically as well. So, we have lots of things in place. We made some really good progress with PBIS last year. I know I shared that spring over our journey to our new mask count. So, something that's really cool for us when we were digging into our data this year was that we noticed a distinct difference in, we have a method of collecting behavior data now for both minor and major behaviors. And we saw from the before time, before PBIS, to after we started school, they're starting to implement the systems. Along with, like you've talked about, and I'm sure the other principals will talk about as well, our increased levels of SCL support that we are fortunate to have right now with our MTSS coordinators and additional school social workers and things we haven't had access to before. At the beginning of the year, we were averaging for a full five-day week of school, about 28 major or minor behavior referrals per week, which is a lot when you average that. That's almost five a day that you're dealing with, and if you're doing it right, that's 30 plus minutes per. At the end of the year, we were averaging about 20 behavior referrals per week for a full week, which actually then exceeded our three-year goal. So, we were able to adjust that this year. And if we took the average of the behavior referrals for a full week before our school-wide expectation implementation and after, before the average from September through January was 24.4 per week, we implemented in February. So, after February through the end of the year, we were averaging about 20.1 per week. So, that shows us that things are working. So, that was pretty exciting for us to see. And we're looking forward to participating in that cohort this year and just more momentum there to keep improving that environment for kids.
Good evening, my name is Tom Cockett, the principal at HomeCraft. It's great to be with you tonight. I would like to say thank you to my colleagues. Even though it's October, it's exhausting and you don't hear thank you enough. So, thank you all from October here. As far as continuous improvement, like Mr. Goldley said, we're never done. And for a lot of us that are Type A, really driven, that can be, as I mentioned, exhausting. But the point is, we keep going. And to sum everything up within CIT or the plans that we have, it doesn't really do us justice because there's a ton we can talk about. And we were sold 60 seconds. I'm probably already through that. Point is, if you ever want more clarity on what's going on in our schools, you're always welcome. The doors are open, please come see us. We can talk your ear off while things are going on, good, bad, indifferent. We're here to serve our kids. And some of the data that's come out of the HomeCraft school improvement plan is really focused on some of the same things that my colleagues and staff, specifically for your new students and those students with special education needs. As you know, MDE measures a lot of very quantifiable data points. And through our data analysis with CNAs and our school improvement plan, those two subgroups within those different categories are the areas that we need to improve and on. I'm really proud to say, because those can be really big lists, especially over the course of a year. But our staff has made significant gains of not having met last year's goal already, and they're on their way to it. And so, I'm really proud of that. We haven't met all of the goals yet, but it was a two-year goal. So, I'm hoping by 2025, this time next year, I'm going to come back and tell you, yeah, we crushed it. According to the numbers now, we did have some nice gains in all of the areas for reading and math. And we're looking at, hopefully, having the same gains for this next year. But one area that I will say is a continued need, and you'll continue to hear me advocate for mental health and behavior supports for all of our schools beyond what we're currently having. And yes, a book for consideration for the upcoming vote. But it's in the area of behavior. And a lot of our schools are very in terms of behavior supports. We implemented the minor-major system and a lot of our schools did last year and a little more succinct way of documentation. We used the previous year's data, because that's what we had, to come up with our goal, and we did not make it. The reality is, when you have a plan, you have a good product and you have a good way of collecting data, you get that just more data. And what I realized real quick was, the previous system that we had in place wasn't capturing all of the need. And so, our goal is not closely being met for that behavior piece, but the good news is within that lighting is we've got some solid data to build what is going to change and support it's going forward. So, I'm looking forward to that. So, even though it's not what we expected, the data is showing us where we need to go, especially for that behavior component as we launch into PBIS and other acronyms too that I will throw at you tonight. But one good thing I will tell you, HomeCraft, four or five years ago, we ran around 350, 360 kids. We're 455 today, and that's pre-K through 5. So, in terms of coming to HomeCraft, we'll squeeze you in, but numbers are coming back and they've been increasing. So, I'm proud of that for our staff because they're the third reason our kids are sticking out and staying. So, thank you.
Good afternoon, evening, I guess, at this point in time. But Jacob Insula, care and treatment sites principal. So, looking at the stuff that we work on, we're really focused on the reading, the math, and behavior. And one of the things that, when I wrap it all together, it all comes down to mental health. When we can get the mental health and check at the care and treatment sites, we actually start to see really good growth in the behavior and the academics. So, that's one of the things that we really focus on with our community partners. A lot of it being worked with at this point in time, but also Bethany, AJC, et cetera, working on those key components in order to start to see that academic growth. I do want to say, thanks, Nate. He's thinking, what for? But integration specialist. One of the great things that we added this year in the care and treatment sites is the integration specialist. Because one of the things that we start seeing when we have students transitioning all of the care and treatment and back into regular public schools, be it to a public school, Hermontown, Dr., ESCO. If they don't have somebody helping with that transition, sometimes you see a slight lag. So, the plan is with that integration specialist working in that capacity, we're going to actually start to see some less coming back into the programs and more success in their home schools. So, thanks for that, Nate. That's a very important thing for me. By looking back on where we're at and where we're going, when I look at the behavior goal, which is kind of in the summary thing, I'm looking at that 36%. You know, we want to have 20% growth, so we got about 58% satisfactory when kids are still, when they come into the program on the behavior stuff. But then, right now, we have about 36% increase from that by the time that they're leaving. So, seeing a substantial growth in the behavior and getting that in check is also kind of bringing that into that. And that helps us with the academics. Last spring, I believe, focused on the academic portion of it, you know, but that behavior and mental health really made it to us.
Thanks, sir. I am Kelly Clark, I'm the principal at East High School. One of the things I most value related to the CIT is, and we just met last night, was the staff's willingness to dive into data and try to unearth where they can improve and be better at. So, I've been really impressed with just the mindset and willingness for continually seeking that growth. Our, a couple of our growth areas that I would share tonight would be centered around first graduation rates among four of our student groups being special ed, our free and reduced students, those students identifying as Hispanic or Latino, and those students identifying as two or more races, and looking for improvement in those areas specifically tied to, not only building wide efforts, but also specifically to some of our check and connect pieces, which is a strong research-based, really proven resource to tie students to. So, we're very intentional about how we assign those resources to the students that are most identifiable in need. And then secondly, also to our student climate surveys, which have identified students looking for a little bit more safety in the hallways and outside of classrooms. Majority of our behavior referrals are coming outside of the classroom. So, things like bathroom vandalism, we see some raping uses and things like that in our hallways and bathrooms that we're continuously trying to address, but using our PBIS team to bring about some systemic ways to address some of those students and address obviously those things that students are identifying themselves as wanting to see. Very proud of those staff and dive into that work and looking forward to those challenges. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kathy Kosharmel. I'm at Condon Park. I've been there for 14 years in the district over there. So, tonight, I'd like to share very quickly some of the celebrations that we... Well, and I, today we had our Data Days at Condon Park, which is part of the MTSS process. And what we do at our Data Days is, today we met with four, the fifth, and kindergarten. And we really, really analyzed our vast data to see where we're at, where we're going, what we need, and then developed our strategies in terms of our interventions. We did that today and then we'll do another Data Day Thursday of this week. With that being said, I'm just super proud of what we do at Condon. You know, this year, our staff is, are focused. And I'll tell you, whatever it takes, thank you, Imagine Dragons, but whatever it takes, we're going to do. We want to make sure that all students are succeeding. And what that really means is, means is we want to continue to close the achievement gap for all kids. As we were analyzing our data from last spring, we did notice, you know, that the students were making gains, the gains that we wanted to see. So, we continue to have a math and a reading goal as well as a social-emotional goal at Condon Park. We were very strong with the MTSS model. We've been really working on our model for a number of years and I'm really proud of the accomplishments we've made. But every year, it is really nice to review it with the CNA and then to see where we're at, where we're going, and what we can do to make some changes. One of the areas that we really looked at last year, we had a goal for our school suspensions. We met our goal, which is great. But that doesn't mean that, you know, as we look at this year, what does it mean? This year, we're focusing on the discipline referrals and we want to really make sure that we're reducing the number of discipline referrals that we have for all of our kids. You know, Tom was mentioning the overall enrollment. Our enrollment is up at Condon, which is great. The bad news is, we have 28, 28, and 27 in our kindergarten classrooms. They asked me that, I shared that with you, and so I am sharing that with you. 28 kindergartners in the classrooms, a lot of kindergartners. The Condon Park staff this year, our focus is on self-care and we're calling it self-care buddies. Very similar to what we do with children, our students with check and connect. Our staff really wants to make sure that they're checking and connecting on each other and being more intentional with doing that because it's only October and we're all exhausted. Finally, as a professional educator, I just have to say that, you know, I do really, really honor and recognize the work that we do every single day, with the education, or the educators, the students, and the families at Condon. It's really been a wonderful opportunity to learn and grow together, and we continue to do that. You can, you're more than welcome to come to Condon at any time, any date, and see what we're doing. And actually, in about 20 minutes, I'll go back to Condon and meet with chaperones for the Wolf Ridge weekend, so. Thank you, everyone. She's done. Don't get the prize. Sorry. I can go to town.
Thanks, Chris.
I'm Ray Jackson. I am a principal at Myers-Locus, as you all know. We have, like many others, three goals. And in the past, reading or literacy has been goal number one. And math has been goal number two, and attendance has been goal number three. And this year, last spring, we really looked at that data. And although the district focus this year is literacy, that still is a huge focus. But our team decided that attendance and engagement needs to be our number one. It is really, we can't even talk about addressing literacy and math until we get them. It is really, we can't even talk about addressing literacy and math until we get them in the classroom regulated so that they can embrace their learning. I'm not going to sugarcoat anything. Our consistent attendance rate is slightly under 40% and that has gone down every year since after COVID and then after COVID as well. And talking as a team, we're trying to problem solve like, what are some of the reasons that this is such an issue? And a lot of it is residual stuff and emotional, social things through COVID. So I'm a little concerned with a lot of families and lack of resources in the area, although it has increased. One of the other challenges is transportation. Many of our families do not have their own transportation and so not pointing fingers this fall was very, very, very challenging. And a celebration to that is my staff, our staff really stepped up and did everything we could to get, and still are, getting kids to school when bus rides aren't ready to go for one, two weeks or longer. I, Jeremy and I talk on almost every other day basis, like how can I help? What can you do? It really is, it cannot be a barrier for our kids and it has been. And so our goal as a building is, you know, number one in the morning, we meet in the office and who, who do we need to go pay for? Because it's just crucial that they have to be there. This fall, or actually next Tuesday and the following Tuesday, during our first fall conferences, our teachers decided that yes, it is important to talk about achievement, but with only being six weeks into school, one of the things that we're going to leave with is having those difficult conversations with families about why attendance and consistent attendance is so important in an empathetic way and trying to talk through and find out what are some of the barriers for their families and looking at previous days of attendance and just really trying to help them understand the importance of that and, and how it's impacting your own child's, or lack of. Another issue that we have that many do is students that struggle with emotional and social and behavioral issues. We do have a lot of support at Myers. Before I came to Myers, I remember hearing all, oh, Myers got tons of, tons of support. We do, but it's still not enough to support the student, number of students that we have that are really struggling on a daily basis. We have mental health practitioners. We have a couple, you know, school social workers, but it's, it's, it's still not enough when we're looking at the number of kids who aren't and who just cannot regulate themselves enough to even be in class. Some great celebrations is last spring, we started what's called a reset room. We call it, and it's our alternative to suspension. Our MTSS facilitator and one of our special ed social workers, Robert Carter, for general time, man that and they have an amazing program that first of all addresses the reason why the students are in reset room and, and also gives them academics the support that they need to complete in school with that they missed. So our suspension's already this spring and last spring when we implemented it dropped on significant pain. Last thing is our staff, I cannot, I've worked in many buildings and we have great staff across the district, but having a group of staff return and return with little to no turnover the last three years, the only ones that, you know, left last year were people that moved on the stage and just knowing that they want to be there and they want to help and support our community as much as possible, but it does take a toll and, you know, it's only October, like Kathy said, and it is exhausting. And so please, again, like everyone else, come to our building. Please, I have a personal invitation if you need one, you don't need one, I have a meeting time anytime, so please come and go to the desk if you'd love it.
Hi, I'm Brad Tesker. I'm a check and a principal at Lincoln Park Middle School. So we have, our CIT has focused over the last number of years on our literacy goal and a behavioral goal with PBIS. We, we continue to dive into our literacy work. We developed a fidelity tool last, last year to be implemented this year. So we're in year three of that, of those efforts. We've also added to our strategies with our literacy work, not just in, we, our goal was focused on school-wide literacy practices that are consistent through to each school, to each classroom, but we've also added building line things, like one book one day. We have another one coming up in November. We are also going to focus on some building line vocabulary efforts here as we, Friday we're going to roll that out with our staff. I think I will speak to the teacher priority as well. I think that's, that's an important step for us as well to align our efforts as a, as a building. Our behavior is another goal focused on PBIS and focused on attendance. I think, I think when I, when I was reviewing our goal, I think we, you know, we started looking at attendance, but all of our efforts have been to reduce the number of referrals that we see a given year and then the number of days of suspension. So, so I think that our goal and our, our efforts were not really aligned and I think that was, I think we just need to correct that. So because our efforts are actually are paying off, we had a reduction of suspendable behaviors and a reduction of days of suspension, both reduced by 32%. So, so with those, we have a continued focus on relationships, continued focus on ressort practices, universal teaching of expectations, which is a big thing in PBIS, and then our alternative to suspension program, a pause program, have really made an impact for, for our students' experience at our school. We are, we have implemented PBIS to fidelity. Last year was the first year we hit that mark. I would expect us to hit that mark again this year, which then allows us to focus on more tier-two level supports for students, identifying students that need a little extra support in terms of behaviors and conduct needs. So I would echo everybody else that talks about mental health supports and, you know, and we do have a lot of support, we do have a lot of resources and our staff is really good at making sure kids are finding the resources that they need. So I mean, that's one of the things that we most proud of at our, at our building is fitting the needs of the students.
Good evening, everybody. Tom Tuscan, principal at Denfeld High School. If you haven't seen all the data, big success at Denfeld last year is that our graduation rate went up 3%, a little over 3%, which is a significant improvement. And of course, that's the forefront of everything we do at Denfeld, is about graduation. Some other data to report, we've got our ninth grade failure rate down to pre-pandemic levels. The challenge with that, of course, is what do you do now? Because it becomes something that plateaus where it is. So our bar coordinator Jenny Wellness and our bar teams are changing the structure of their meetings on a monthly basis to shake that up and to break through our plateaued failure rate. And what that's going to look like, you may have heard the phrase pause days before, but we actually put classes on pause and try to focus on the kids that need some extra help. We're going to be trying to use our data in those team meetings now to determine when those pause days happens so we can push through in a more organized fashion. We used to offer pause days to classroom teachers and they could take us up on that and now we're going to be using the data to kind of make that a more structured endeavor. So that is a significant change for us. But again, when you look at what happens, if ninth graders are successful, they tend to graduate successfully. So a lot of our efforts initially with bar were ninth grade, we've had a 10th grade to that, but that is a significant change in the structure of bar this year. Our goals are primarily trying to improve attendance, which we've seen some improvement in, and secondarily, trying to improve our climate, and that is primarily the number and percentage of our kids who feel safe. I will tell you, we've never been this far in the continuous improvement process and because Denfeld has been identified prior to this, we've got to spend a lot of time with regional centers of excellence on this process. We've never been this far into it. So we've talked, when you hear Dr. Lake talk about the effort the district has put into this, it is paying off because now we got into it this fall, our CIT team did it, and we looked at our data from last year and said, it didn't answer the story. Like the biggest gap we have in data right now is qualitative. We've got the quantitative data, we can tell you how many kids feel safe at Denfeld, we can tell you what our consistent attendance looks like, but it leaves two lingering questions. Why don't they feel safe? And secondarily, why aren't they coming to school? So what really at our last CIT meeting last week left us thinking, we may have to do focus groups with our kids to answer those questions because really the answers to those questions qualitatively is what's going to drive the action planning that comes from that. So if we weren't this far into the process, if we didn't have the guidance and training that we've gotten in CIT, we wouldn't have drilled down this far and kind of noticed that we had a gap because that's certainly not something I've experienced at Denfeld prior to this. And just to celebrate this as well, we have building-wide SEL starting this week in all grades, all core classes. So that's a big success because we gradually expanded that from ninth grade to 10th grade and now includes 11th and 12th grade as well. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Suena, principal of Ordean East. First I want to say thank you to Tanya Lake. If you don't know the huge resource she is to us and the district, it is an incredible, incredible resource. She is the reason we have continued on this journey. She creates the conditions for success and I am grateful. So, yeah, we have goals like everybody else, but honestly, that does not tell the story. And so we have lots of conversation in our CIT and in our different meeting groups. It's all around, not just the goal that we're hitting, but what are we going to do different so we get different results? And many of the things that we have done, like implementing PBIS, which is a district initiative, and also really focusing in on our MTSS structures to make sure that we can support learning at all tiers. So those are all those things that are super supported by the district and I appreciate that. Some of the great things that are happening at our dean that are very different is first and a whole issue, we did open house after school started and that was like met with a lot of like, why would you ask? And I will tell you that from an equity lens, every student has the same exact experience on the first day of school. They work together to find their lockers, they, if they have a question with their counselors, they help each other find their counselors. We had time to move around the building by implementing three different wins per day to do check-ins and it, it has paid off. What the kids have experienced in the start of the school is significantly different than it was when I was there for the first time last year. And so there are multiple things that are happening on a day-to-day basis that do tell the story. The goals are great, they measure our institution's success, it does not always measure our kids' success and our kids are making some great, great strides. 1,100 middle schoolers in one building is always going to be a challenge and we're always going to see the things that might not be that great, but there are so many positives that happen constantly. That's part of why we wrote our behavior goal in a way that says we're going to maintain that 90% success because that's where they work and we don't have to hear that story. So I'm super proud to be working with a group of professionals that I work with and please do stop by. And again, thank you to Tanya and to our district leadership for supporting these structures.
Thank you. I have a sixth grader who's going to Ordean East Middle School and he loves it and he owns the school. I feel like he went open house, he led us around, I'm so proud of him. He gave us some hints and helps and that was pretty cool.
I'm Nathan Edison. I knew a Stowe elementary, so I just want to stand up to that all day. So thank you for having us. I can't claim the, claim credit for anything that happened with our positives since I just started this fall, but looking at our CIT, we really focused on reading, math with, and reading math and then attendance. And we did have overall our scores in math and reading thrive, which was disappointing. But when you started dissecting the data, we realized it's not as bad as it looks. We look at our groups, follow our groups from year to year, they had some gains, each of them had gains, which was great. It was the fifth graders, two years ago, they were high flyers, so they kind of slipped into our scores. But we look at our current grades, they also have grown. Also our special ed students and our students of reading reduced, they showed a lot of growth too. So that's really encouraging. Thank you, really proud of our school. Our PBIS work, they've done a lot of work. I feel like in the last year, we've really burned it to school with positivity, which is great. And our teachers, especially our K2 teachers are really excited about the literacy frameworks and literacy frameworks and moving fly curriculum. And that's fun to see. I most proud of the staff. Stowe's really, we have a lot of poverty out there and a lot of struggles with that. And one challenge is we have a lot of unhoused families and that's always a challenge. And getting support for those students takes a lot and our staff come every day and work really hard for those students, which is super impressive. And a goal, a personal goal of mine, every day I see the wrenchell, the tractor bus kicking up kids right at Stowe there and that drives me nuts. We're going to change that. So that's a personal goal that we're even not close buses or nothing because we're going to Stowe, so.
And Darren is going to not talk, so everyone will be super happy and love him.
I'm really happy about two things since you can already introduce me, Principal Baywood. I want to say with the Minnesota Twins, 2-1 in both their games. They beat Toronto 3-1, but that's not my most happy love tonight. It's a whole second ago. Really happy to be the Baywood principal. Our free to reduce run rates have doubled the last couple of years. Our WIFAD, we've also increased enrollment, but also our scores have gone up and everybody in COVID were tuned and our scores have gradually gone up. And so that's good. But that tells me too, one of the things that tells me is that being in school is super important. So reading is going to always continue to be our goal because we're not there yet. The second thing, and Jim talked about consistent attendance, consistent attendance is being there 90% of the time. A fourth of our kids aren't there that much, which means they're not in school, one or more days every two weeks. And so we really want to work on that and get that reduced to help our, our overall attendance rate is okay, it's above 90%, but we have a lot of kids missing a lot, or a number of kids missing a lot, but we want to improve that. So that's where we're, what we're going to be working on there with parents for sure. Yeah, that's it. One minute, people.
I think, how many prizes? Was there a prize?
Yeah, I think Darren takes it.
Take the prize, Darren, as the shortest. So I want to say also thank you to Dr. Lake and all of her hard work and thank you principals. So I do want to say thank you to all of us. The incident today, the incident today, we turned to Darren's theory, principal leadership matters. Principal leadership matters. Before I used to be one of those individuals who also talked about teachers, teacher, teachers, and teachers are extremely important. Excellent teachers are extremely important. They have the benefit of improving outcomes in the classroom. But who has the benefit and has the greatest impact on the building as a whole? Principals. And the research has aired that out, so I want to say thank you to our principals and all the other leaders who are here. As you know, maybe about a month ago, we gave a presentation related to our school performance data across the district. There were a lot of pockets of success and there were highlights that we were really proud of. And there was also some news in the paper and, and the data that said we had a long way to go. I have this slide back up because right now, as you know, we just completed a strategic plan. Where you fit in is you were part of the reason we adopted that plan and that plan gave us our North Star. And now that data and strategies that are embedded in strategic plan, you see how now that it's cascading down through our system. Right there, we talked about going from the school board to the district leadership teams to continuous improvement teams. You just heard from our leaders how and what they're going to do to improve outcomes, to change outcomes for students in their ability and across this district. And we are so encouraged and proud of all their efforts and work and I, and I hope you are, I hope you hear and I hope the community hears that we have leaders who are really dedicated and committed to improving outcomes and the strategies that they identified and the goals that they're setting will make a difference. It does take resources. It's going to, we're going to continue to need resources to really meet all the diversity that exists in our buildings. And so I just want to say thank you to our principals and the teachers in our buildings who are working hard to really make things better for our students. to really make things better for our students. We'll take some questions. I see John Superintendent Magus is on mic as well first. Superintendent Magus.
Well, actually, you have said much of what I was going to say already and that's a good thing. It shows that there's continuity in the way that we work. I was going to talk about the research around principal practice being impactful. I was going to talk about that through line of accountability from the school board through the CIT teams to the PLCs. And then I was going to share one other thing and then I was hoping that we could have a standing ovation. But we've done. But what I was going to say first is that I'm grateful for the district office team as well because the leadership of Assistant Superintendent Bonds and Director Lake and Directors Sparts and Larva and Crane and so many other people working on this, it's really important. And once again, the principal is probably the crucial factor in student performance. Teachers are the biggest impact because they're closest to the students, but principals impact the practice of our teachers. So their efforts are magnified tenfold and I couldn't be more grateful. When I talk about the things I was grateful for today, our principals got to be near the top of the list. And today is what day? October 3rd. And October is National Principal Appreciation Month. And that was when I was going to stand up and applaud. So let's give one more.
Thank you. And we will take questions from the board. Member Larfa Kemp.
Sure, I have to laugh too. Thank you for your words, Anthony, because I had written at the beginning of the, as people were talking, that I wanted to make sure I said, thank you principals for the leadership you provide your schools, your community, your students and your families. And then you put it so eloquently. But I was sitting here taking notes as each of you talked and what you were celebrating, but also your genuineness on what was challenging. And I just so appreciate you all for, you know, it's hard to say, here's what is hard in our schools. And it's hard to say we need different kinds of support. But I just so appreciated the way you shared the things you celebrate with your staff and then just really being honest and open on what the challenges are. So just as a board member, I greatly appreciate that. And I know we've talked in our board retreats about doing some visits to the schools in a very organized way this year. And so we are going to look forward to, in a very organized way, because we also honor and respect your time. If we all were dropping in all the time. But so I look forward to, and I think all of us as board members do, working with Chair Winkle to come on out, but in a way that gives you the time to share with us and but also honors your time. So thank you all so much for being here tonight.
Joe.
Member Eider is ready.
Member Eider.
I just want to thank you all very much. And again, I have a little member Larfa Kemp said, we've spent a lot of time thinking about getting back in schools. I haven't been a school board member of schools since before the pandemic. So I'm really excited to get back out there and see all the great work you're doing. And two things I love about being a school board member, one of them is watching our big buses go by full of kids and thinking about what those kids are doing on those buses and then walking through the halls of like really busy schools. I love that energy and I love seeing those kids. So that's really what drives me. And I think I can speak for a lot of us on the board is we really have a laser focus this year on making sure that we make the good financial decisions so that we can provide our students what they need. And we hear it loud and clear, mental health. My own two children, thinking about how they came through the pandemic, especially my youngest, who was a kindergarten when he went home and stayed home for that long time and then seeing just his struggle to catch up and to get that social emotional learning. So I know we are laser focused on making sure that we prioritize mental health and mental health supports for our students so that they can be in the schools, feel safe, loved and seen so that they can do the reading that they need to do, learn arithmetic and then have great mental health. So again, I can't thank you all enough and I can't wait to get out and see you all there. So thank you again.
Okay, shout out to Nathan. I'll be joining you at those bus stops. Growing up in Morgan Park and being a part of the Western community and my own children going to Stowe for their elementary, just I also, and I live back in Morgan Park now, I'm right on the bus drive. So I see those Proctor and Renshaw, I'm looking at the times that they're picking up their kids. We're looking at, you know, like, how can I go up there and, you know, pull the sign? Give some M&amp;M's out if they switch, I don't know. So shout out. But my other aha is that for the last three or four years, most of us on the school board have attended sessions that have reviewed that principal survey that was done very intensely, very authentically with all of you. And then they shared all of that out to board members at different conferences. That was such an aha moment for me to realize that for 30-plus years I was working in high school and I knew my principals were working hard because we're all working hard. But I just really just thought that I could go in my classroom and do what I always did, day in and day out. But then, you know, so I just support you so much and I, it was just a big paradigm shift for me. And that seeing our end of leadership was really putting a lot of effort on supporting all of you and that's what brought in Jen Larva at the middle school and high school and brought in Barbara and the Sparks at the elementary level is to support our principals. And I just really appreciate the leadership and the organizational structure that, you know, kind of changed in 2020 to 2021. And again, a commitment to, from my leadership on the board to walk the hard line because there's going to be some hard decisions and we have to remember the celebrations you shared with us and the challenges and make sure that as we walk the walk, that we remember to support you in both our financial commitment and where those tweaks might have to be. That will be painful if we don't keep your needs in mind. So I was glad to have you here today. And like Member Larfa Kemp said, like two months ago, we talked as a board that, you know, we really do enjoy getting into your sites. And many of us get there randomly, whether we're dropping on something or whether we're, you know, at a concert or we're at games. But intentionally, intentionally trying to be with you and allow you an opportunity to share. And so I started structuring something and Executive Secretary Terry Paquette was going to contact all of you because our first visits are going to kind of be in the month of October to mid-November. And then, then the communication with the levy kind of took control and we're like, we don't want, you know, we're asking your staff and all of you to be present for, you know, conversations on information sharing for the levy. So I kind of put our Google Doc on hold for our staff or for our board to sign up to see where they could come and intentionally. But we really wanted to be intentional about coming to visit. And I knew as I was putting together the schedule that not all board members were going to certainly be in every one of your buildings during the year, but we intentionally wanted to be in buildings with you and see the great things in the hallways and the classrooms. So thanks for sharing.
Members DeSantis.
I'll just say something really quick because I would just echo everything else the other, I felt, board members said. But it was just really inspiring to hear how much you know and love each of your unique school communities. And you're all late and you're tired and you're working hard. So we really appreciate you being here and sharing that. It was also really rewarding for me just to hear a lot of the commonalities that we've been working at as a district, kind of echoing out of your reflections too, MTSS, PBIS, and then, you know, some of the more challenging things. And mental health and behavioral health. And we're going to do what we can on our end to work hard and be there to support you on that. So thank you.
Superintendent Magus.
So a lot of positivity and I'm going to share a little bit of a warning and a little bit of a challenge. And I know that sounds a little bit odd, but it's based on the feedback I hear from you. I hear everybody is working really hard. And I also hear that we still don't have all the resources we could use and all the resources we could need. And so the warning is we have a referendum coming up. And if that referendum does not pass, we're looking at $20 to $25 million worth of cuts over the course of the next four or five years. And a lot of those are areas that you've talked about tonight as far as behavioral supports, mental health supports, academic supports that we desperately need. Or if it passes, we will have $79 million worth of additional support over the next few years, the next 10 years. So I know we've been here for two and a half hours, two hours and 10 minutes. And I would say if you could take 30 seconds, if you have social media to look at some of the information we've shared to try and get information out about the referendum, if you just go in and repost one or two of those things on your social media, the people trust you. When it comes to spreading the word about the referendum, district administration is seen as kind of the bureaucratic amorphous blob, right? But we're not, we're real people. But when they see, when they hear from teachers and when they hear from you as leaders, you're going to have really significant impact on that. And so when we think about the resources we need to keep the march going, keep the good fight, 30 seconds would mean a lot. And I just really, really appreciate what each and every one of you do personally and what you do collectively.
I'm just going to jump in on that because many of us were at a presentation this morning at nine o'clock. The Chamber of Duluth offered an opportunity to, you know, to sponsor a public forum where the school district got to share information about the upcoming levy. And Superintendent Magus just knocked it out of the park. His presentations, each time I've seen it now, because I've also attended some PTA meetings in the evening, you know, are just strong, focused, informational, smart. He knows the statistics, he knows the vision, he knows what we need. And he's been working really hard to attend all of your staff meetings. He's appearing at PTA meetings, we're staffing parent teacher conference tables. He's got opportunities to speak in front of some of the other businesses in our community to support it. So again, I'm just super proud of the work that our district has done in getting the information out. And so, you know, all of the board too is sharing their posts as much as we can. I think I liked most of your Facebook pages, whether they're your personal ones or your school. And I would imagine you've got to share it on your personal Facebook page, right?
If it's district administration, you could share it. You should share it.
Information can be shared.
Oh, really? And you could share it on your personal Facebook view, but we should be sharing the district information on our pages as well. But I think when friends see friends posting things, that says a lot as well. So again, if it wasn't out of knowing the crossroad at which we are, I wouldn't be asking, especially this late, to ask for another 30 seconds. But 30 seconds would mean a lot.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. We have our next presenter coming up is Nate Smith. Nate Smith is our coordinator for the Office of Educational Equity and he will provide us a memberage related to our education equity framework. As Nate comes up and our principal leaders exit.
Is Nate going to share why he's on practice?
It's a rough day at school. We're going to pull up the presentation. I had to serve you a second.
And I would say, Mr. Smith, I'm sure that everybody's leaving. It's not, I feel it's not you. I think that we all recognize that it's significant importance of equity in the equity framework. I think it just comes down to, it's been a very long day in and for. But I want, I want to show you the honor and respect that this is, this is great work. And we appreciate it.
All right, I appreciate that, John. Welcome or what's up, school members? It's nice to be here in front of you all again today. This is Shetland. We're going to kind of go through this as a plan for the development of our educational equity framework. And starting off with some slide to share the background and the current reality. Back in 2017, the previous superintendent, Mr. Grant Sett, asked the previous coordinator of OEE to assist in developing an education equity framework within our school district. And that process began with researching resources for definition along with engaging the community to get some feedback on the development of the components of the educational equity framework and through that process gathering stakeholder input through listening sessions with individuals and community organizations including three Think Kids input sessions, community conversations and a partnership with a health group gathering input on the framework to make sure that we're targeting individuals and communities who identify as diverse or within poverty. And through that process, the definition of equity and the Minnesota Ten Commitments of Equity and the team or components of the framework that the stakeholder team recommended be included within an educational equity framework, which was then passed by a board resolution on June 19, 2018. The resolution is linked here, but it's also in the future slide here. And that resolution directed the school district to work on implementing an educational equity framework that included the use of the T tool, systems alignment, the Minnesota Ten Commitments of Equity and the definition of equity. And the team was pulled together September of 2018, a couple of months after that resolution. And they met for a year and they started drafting recommendations for proposed focus areas, PED, professional development training ideas, and a draft implementation and monitoring plan. And timeline was started, it was a draft draft, it was never completed. In November 2019, that team dissolved for a variety of different leader, different reasons and COVID hit later that year. And we also saw the transition of different leaders within the, within the school district. A new superintendent, a new assistant superintendent, a new person in my position. And all that leads us to kind of where we are now. And so as you all know, we engaged in a years-long strategic planning process which identified advancing equity as a priority area, priority strategic direction that our school district is in pursuit of currently. And advancing equity, our office, the Office of Education Equity is responsible for a advancing equity action card, which identifies the development of the education equity framework as a priority focus this year. And so that action, that action card also raised up other priority focus areas that we as a district and school community can do to advance equity. And we have identified the need to create an equity leadership task force and monitoring team made up of district staff and community members who all work on and monitor advancing equity and the development of a equity action, education equity framework. So we'll go to the next slide here. This is just the resolution that was passed, E6183555, where we committed for the education equity framework. Next slide. This is the Minnesota Ten Commitments Equity. I really like to see the other presentations include this as a system and for the work that we're going to be doing aligning our systems and just noting where our systems are supporting the Ten Commitments Equity. All right, so next slide. I just included this slide here. This is the Minnesota Multi-Tierred Systems of Support infographic that talks about all the various parts that school systems can incorporate to perpetuate positive systems change. And Minnesota, and within the Minnesota model, you'll see family and community engagement is a big part of the multi-tiered systems of support model. And so the development of a framework will support family, community engagement and the infrastructure for continuous improvement. Next slide. So the next steps here is to create the equity task force and monitoring team following a four-stage development process. And the team will facilitate the development of the framework, which will include the following things. So the district's definition of equity, the implementation, use and monitoring of the T tool. That's a tool for equity. T tool, that's the tool for equity and community, and district alignment to the Minnesota Ten Commitments Equity. So those are the three things that you saw in the, that original resolution. But we have an opportunity to expand and explore how we can really develop a, a meaningful framework, which would include the development of a diversity policy, recruitment and retention plan, affinity group structure, guidelines, and articulated district support of our education equity advisory committee, the American Indian Education Parent Advisory Committee, and other district advisory teams. And then that team will also consider the existing policies, practices, organizational culture, working to identify areas for improvement. A team will develop and identify measurable goals, objectives, and accountability measures to progress, monitor the implementation of the framework, and determine key milestones and timelines for implementing initiatives and regularly review and adapt the, the framework plan as needed. So here is the four-stage development processes of the two first stages. Right now, we're currently in stage one. Who's responsible as district leaders and staff, principals, head leaders, families, community members, I would even include board members as we work to assemble a diverse group of individuals made up of, of said individuals who are passionate about equity and inclusion. And we want to recruit members to make sure that we have perspectives from all levels of our organization and within the communities, and seeking individuals who possess knowledge, skills, and a genuine commitment towards equity. Shannon, if you can pump back to that previous slide still, I can hear you. So recruitment has started at the beginning of this year. We've already been reaching out to individuals and sharing some information about the work that, that needs to be done and the goals, to get some proof of the goals to develop the framework this year. And there's a process linked there. Shannon, I don't know if you can, if you can open up the process for the formation of this year?
I'll have to, I can, I just have to stop casting the other thing first.
It will be up in a second.
All right. All right, thank you, Shannon. And I know there's a way to cast, I think, your entire screen, or it probably knows how, you know, I, I don't know how to do the tap to thing, but this is the steps for the creation of the monitoring team created here in September. So you can see that identifying the mission is the first step. And the mission is to promote equity and inclusion in the school district by supporting the development of the framework, which will include all of those things that we talked about in, in one of those first slides. And the second step is engaging stakeholders. So reaching out to various advisory groups. We did a presentation at EAC about two weeks ago to try to recruit participants. I'm on the agenda for the next American Indian Parent Advisory Committee to share the need for representatives, and presented at different leadership meetings here within the district, including the teaching learning equity department and the Cabinet Plus team. And so as we recruit team members and share this information, we want to make sure that we are aiming for a well-balanced represent, representation of, of school district leader, staff, and community and family representatives, knowing that a diverse team provides broader perspective on, on equity issues. And the goal was to create a core team of ten to fifteen people who are passionate and knowledgeable about diversity, equity, and inclusion. But you'll notice at third point that we want to be open to adjustments to the team size and membership as needed, continuing to note that certain perspectives are underrepresented. We want to consider expanding and reshaping the team, scheduling regular meetings, and then convening our first meeting if I remember, if I remember first, so it's coming up quick. And step five of, of that is continuing to follow the process in steps two through four. So Shannon, if you can pump back to that slideshow. And I saw that probably should have included this, this page within the slideshow, but that's okay. So the step two of the formation of the team is, is the orientation for the team members. And so that's the Office of Education Equity will be responsible for that, myself, and so that will be defining and communicating the roles, responsibilities, the expectations that we have for each team member, and outlining the purpose of the objectives of the team. So I'm looking forward to vetting and bringing in members, creating a team, and supporting each individual's roles and responsibility, the work that needs to be done. It's gonna be a considerable amount of work that we're, that we're expecting the team members to, to do as we develop the plan. And then after we have determined roles and responsibilities, part of the orientation is training and education, so making sure that the team members have enhanced understanding of equity-related concepts and issues, including things like cultural competency, implicit bias, and the like. And while we, and I will be training the, the team through workshops and seminars. I plan to create some asynchronous learning sessions, so people can come in and see my handsome face, teach you all different things in a video, and the like, whichever I have to share with the board too. And encouraging team members to engage in self-directed learning. I'm not sure where we lost the slide, but there's a lot of really...
It's still casting.
There's a lot of written reports that can be shared with team members and other research papers and the like.
It's a little bit, but not there.
Oh, okay.
It's had, almost got the projector. But it is displaying here on these two screens.
And so identifying the roles and responsibilities and doing the training and orientation will take place November and December, with the goal to start the work coming in January. And so Shannon, if we can bump to stage three, the next slide. And we'll continue the orientation and work on action plan development, so creating a, a specific action plan, including a timeline with specific initiatives, with strategies being implemented, including the development of the framework, which includes all of the things below. So taking monitoring and use of the T tool and development and action plan and timeline for that. District alignment to Minnesota Ten Commitments Equity, creating an action line, timeline, and district guidance on how we can incorporate the commitments equity with our system, development of diversity policy. There are school districts like St. Paul that have a lot of policies, so I can't imagine that would take too long. I think the longest part is vetting the policy through different leadership teams and, and creating, in collaboration with the community, is gonna be really important, so. Well, we can run through March, and stage four is the implementation. So as we create the action plan and we identify specific initiative strategies and the timeline, making sure that we are establishing effective and intentional communication and collaboration across all district leadership teams, such as who the school board and here to, to keep you all informed of how, where the work is going. And while we create these communications, we're just making sure that we're fostering important dialogue, active listening, and regularly just updating, updating everybody, everybody needs to know. I think part of the, the communication that I get back from some of our critical community stakeholders is communication. So make sure that, and someone mentioned it earlier, I think, too, that you can't, you can't over-communicate, but you certainly can under-communicate. And making sure that we're getting feedback and input from employees at all levels of process, of the, of the process, just to ensure that voices are heard and considered in all task force-related decisions. Next slide. Progress measurement. So we're gonna regularly assess the, the team's progress against the action plan while monitoring the impact of initiatives on organizational culture, employees' action, inclusion metrics, and that's through surveys, focus groups, qualitative feedback sessions to gauge perceptions and identify areas for improvement. And so as our, our schools send out climate surveys, for example, this would be great to create a couple monitoring questions within those surveys, so not creating a whole new thing, just giving parts of something that's already going through our system. And we monitor, review, progress, and increment data regularly. So the vision and implementation is by setting clear goals and establishing a team and implementing robust monitoring mechanisms. We aspire to foster workplace values and standards, and our commitment extends to implementing and monitoring the use of the T tool, aligning our systems with the Minnesota Ten Commitments Equity, creating an educational equity framework. And through these initiatives, we aim to create an inclusive environment where everyone feels respected, empowered, and has equal opportunities to thrive. And so then the last slide is just questions and reflections. I want to share that I think this is such a fantastic opportunity to rebuild some trust that we have with different sectors of our community. There's a lot of great work that was done to develop the resolution of commitment back in twenty eighteen. It's a question that I get asked regularly, like, what is the district doing with our T tool? And what is our, what is our framework in the district? How does that, how does that look like within the lives of students? And so all the districts have, have frameworks, and I think that as we, as we develop a team and we get a team together, we're gonna see the framework expand. You know, we have those, we have those great ideas within the guidance of building a framework, you know, district support of, of affinity groups, and recruitment and retention plan, development of a diversity policy, system alignment to the commitments to equity, the use and monitoring of the T tool. But I think that there's other things that are just gonna, other ideas that are gonna happen organically from the community and with the community, and our system, and a school district can do to support all communities within our school. So I'm just super excited. It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a long process, but with a lot of, a lot of work. And I think that we're gonna have some really meaningful, really meaningful conversations along the way. And we're gonna learn some insights about the system and how we can continue to support all kids. And questions, reflections. My brain is slow because it's also been a long day. And it's more, every time I stepped outside, I didn't want to come back in, but I am.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And we will take questions, but again, I would say thank you to Mr. Smith for all this leadership related to our equity work. Thinking of, I have the screen, I have displayed this again because I want you to also think about this. We have three pillars, right? Supporting every student. Second one, improving systems, and...
And equity.
Equity.
Advancing equity.
Right? So those three things. And so I, as we go through these conversations and talk about equity, I want the board to remember that not only are we sharing this information, working with all of our district leaders, plus Nate shared, we've already communicated and exchanged opportunities to share this with all of the teaching learning equity team we met, and Nate had a chance to share the work that he's engaged in, to make sure that everyone's focused on equity. And even in the presentations you heard tonight, you may have noted, may not have caught it, but some of the work that they were identifying was related to equity. Part of the equity work is identifying opportunity gaps that exist, or achievement gaps that exist, so disparities in outcomes for students. So buildings are really focused on identifying those subgroups, or those groups of students, I hate the, the phrase subgroups, I'm trying to change my vernacular with that, but groups of students who need additional support, whether those students are students with special needs, whether their students are African-American students or Canadian students. As you heard through the presentations, buildings are really diving deep into data to identify student groups that need more support. And that's a strategic effort that we are really trying to ensure that happens, because it's all about a mindset. So how are we gonna change outcomes for those students? By making sure there's a system and a structure and a focus on making sure everyone is thinking differently, as indicated here. It's all about a mind shift. Like, how do we make sure all of our leaders, how do we make sure that they are with their staff to change their mindsets around students and meeting needs of all students in the classroom? So our principals will have a chance to hear this presentation at the Principal Plus meeting in the near future, because it's gonna be in interval in terms of making sure we change the environment and continue the work that they have already started to identify. So we'll take some questions, because I want to add more, and as, as, we have questions from you.
Yeah, so I, I'm exhausted just hearing your presentation. So thank you, I had a time for the incredible work you've done and you will be doing over the next few weeks and months, so there you go. I have a question for you in terms of if we have names of families, parents, community members, people we think would be some different voices, and maybe someone that maybe hasn't been as engaged, but would be helpful for this process, do we send them your way? Do you want us to give you names?
I want as many names as possible, and if we get, if we get a lot, I'll be meeting with individuals who want to understand their lived life experience and understanding of, of equity and understanding of the needs of, of the community of our kids. And so, yes, please send some names my way.
Superintendent May.
So thinking about, this is a very ambitious plan, there's a lot there. When I think about what really needs to happen if we're going to truly advance equity, it oftentimes comes down to what are we, what are we willing to do? What would we need to do to dismantle current systems and structures that don't result in equal outcomes for kids or equitable outcomes for kids? What, what do you, what do you need from us as leaders of the organization? What do you want from us? And speak freely. How can we make sure that this happens and it's not just good intention?
I think it's a, it's a willingness to keep ourselves and each other accountable. So as we advance equity in our system, there are gonna be, there are gonna be things that may cause shifts to the system. I think just, for example, equitable interview processes or equitable recruitment processes, and just having a deep examination of the way that, that we're recruiting candidates, the way that we bring in candidates, the way that we interview, the way that hiring managers create interview teams. And this is just an example, but to perpetuate equity in systems, we need to completely change the way that that's done. And so I think that we'll have pushback from within the system at all levels, from principals to directors even. And so understanding that the, the adventure towards authentic equity within school systems is gonna, it's, it's gonna, you know, you're gonna come across confrontation, you're gonna come across, across pushback, you're gonna come across critical questions, and I think that all those are really healthy things. And so I think as we, as we pursue equity, knowing that, that those things are on the journey, being prepared for that, and being prepared to hold ourselves accountable to make the tough decisions to pursue equity. So as we develop the plans and even within the, the advancing equity action card as a whole, I think that there's gonna be, there's gonna be departments that are, are gonna be delegated responsibility for certain initiatives transparently. So everyone will know, and making sure that as a system, we are following up on, you know, those delegated responsibilities, that we're providing support for those things, and being really transparent with the community and with each other internally and externally about the process. And, you know, change is gonna be challenging, especially for, for people who have been within the system for a long time, and especially if the change, the recommended change is, is different than the way that we do things. I think there, there is comfort and consistency, which is a good thing too at times, but I think that there's tremendous progress that can be done when we get outside of that comfort zone, so. Wish I got a little insight, I couldn't guess you, but...
Sure.
So I'm having a hard time wrapping myself, my, I understanding around the, the team that you're creating, community, teachers, principals. So do you have a sense that those will be difficult people to, to harness because time is, because their time is so overwhelmingly busy? And do, does the work of this team then become an evening type of time together? And do we pay stipends for people who are gonna be working? Because it seems like a lot of our commitment here on this paper from all the steps is a big lift for this team that has joined you. That's my first question. My second question is, is that I've met you, I've seen you work, you've presented to us a number of times, I get a chance to travel with you, to travel consultations. Who, who are your supporters? I, I only know Nate Smith as our, as our AI integrations director. You, you must, in order for this to be, to be, to be nurtured and grow and achieve the things we all, district and the district, want and want for our, for your, who else leads with you? It can't be just you, right? Do we have other staff members that? I know we have, former student of mine, so is she still with us? I think, is she your...
Bridgette.
Yeah.
Bridgette Eckwood, she's a former student, she's an integration specialist at... Bridget, Bridget Eckwood. She is a former Danville student. She's an integration specialist at Danville currently. I know you have a lot of careers, so there's probably others.
Well, is she working with you in your department? She helps lead, I mean, I believe I've been probably talking to-
I'll answer your question and, well, you want to pick a kick at it, but I'll, I'll answer first. It's a, it's our entire organization. So it is an expectation of our entire leadership team. That's why, as we talk about advancing equity, it's part of, what we've identified is part of our strategic plan. So as I was trying to communicate about five minutes ago, it's an expectation and everyone is working towards it. And we are learning and we are on a journey together. Nate is not alone in it. Benesequay, Benesequay is not alone in this work. It is a shared responsibility of all teams. And we have leaders in departments who also shepherd some of the work and do some of the framing as Nate, Mr. Smith is doing for. So he's not alone in this effort. It is an endeavor for all of our leaders, an expectation for all of our leaders. And we're going to, you know, roll and learn and it is a journey again, as I indicated. Smith?
Yeah, I was all, all on that and that John and I, we are fully supportive. And I think that is, that's a big difference than from the last time that Franklin was attempted to be developed, Alquaid. When he left, when he left, he left emails and other things that I could look at. And one of his emails that he left was, was expressing frustration that he felt that this work was cycled and not supported by the district as a whole. And so I think that that culture is completely different within my experience at this leadership level. In that the messaging is consistent that, that as a system, we're responsible for this. And John and I have raised, both perpetuating that message consistently across leadership meetings and organizationally. And internally within the office, we have about twenty-seven staff and programs funded through the Achievement Integration Plan. Including twelve integration specialists, soon to be thirteen with families in transition one. And I shared this plan with them and the integration specialists are in full support of helping out however, however they want. Whether that's doing the work themselves or connecting students and families to the work to give meaningful impact. And I get a lot of support from the community too, you know, through facilitating the education equity advisory committee. Which last month, we had our first community facilitator. And so co-collaborative community engagement and community engaged leadership is, is one of my leadership philosophies. And through that, I've been able to develop partners across diverse community organizations like Family Freedom Center, ACO. I sit on the executive, I'm the executive officer for the NAACP. I'm part of the men's group within our community and a twenty-fourth African-American men's group. And so I've got a bunch of networks. And I think I regularly hear that people within the community have trouble trusting the district for, for different things. But I regularly reinforce that, that they trust me as an advocate internally within the community. So I think that brings tremendous value to the work that our organization is doing through those partnerships and those relationships that I made. And actually, your first question about when we're going to meet. So it's going to be evening work after work at many advisory groups, you know, probably like a four to seven. I'm thinking a three-hour monthly meeting with work to be done in between the meetings. And I am a strong advocate for stipends. And so we're working internally to find some creative ways to be able to pay the people for this work. Not only is it a lot of physical work, but I mean, doing equity work takes an emotional toll as well. So I would like to be then, that is to be decided, determined internally. We're trying to think of creative ways to do so. But I know through the networks that I've created, with diverse community partners, there are, there's interest in trying to find creative ways to make sure that people are paid. I don't want to get in a trap where we, you know, we say we value the input of diverse community members. And so we came to the table, but then we don't truly value if I'm able to support them financially for the time, which I think is important. So people within the district are aware of that and we're navigating through those challenges, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Smith.
And you all have a nice night.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing your face on the trainings you're talking about.
Yeah. And I want to appreciate as Nate, I know it's late, Mr. Smith, I know it's late, if you're heading home. But I do want to remind the board that we have not been waiting on making progress as things related to equity. I'll give you just quick two or three examples. As you know, we moved forward last year, now it seems like a long time, it's been maybe two years now, with a gender inclusion policy. Something was forward thinking, we wanted all the districts to have moved forward with thinking about making sure all kids have great experiences in our district. This year, we implemented and changed the transportation guidelines that will increase access to our district bus. That's something that has been different, moved it from one and a half miles, two miles, to now it's one mile. So the result of that is we have many kids, especially kids who across all of our districts, especially on the west side. Students who live in Central Hillside that, that used to have to walk to Denfield or Lincoln Park. They now have access to our bus, our buses and our transportation route. And so we're really proud of that effort and a significant number of families have taken advantage of that. Because again, we're thinking about equity, thinking about the disparities that exist in our school system. And we're trying to put the resources in place. And the last thing I'll share is, you may have seen emails, because I think you received those emails related to our hands-on learning experiences. With our remaining S R dollars and S R dollars from last year. We are really trying to make sure students who don't have the opportunities that other families have to go on excursions and go on learning experiences. We made sure that those students now have access to those resources. And over the last two years, students are now taking field trips that they've never attended. They've also participated in camps with the Y, organized camps that we've been able to fund. Opportunities they have not been able to do in years. And so we are constantly thinking about the disparities that exist in our schools and make sure all our kids have opportunities. And yes, all of our students benefit from it, but they know that we really have a focus on students who have been marginalized. And we want to see efforts to make sure those students have greater opportunities to access those dollars. And we're going to continue to do those things. So I'll just give you some examples of things that we have really made strides to, you know, be equity-minded and to improve outcomes and meet the needs of all our kids. So I'll stop there. So that does conclude our meeting and thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.